Divide this into three parts. Parts one and two are the debt service overview. I'm going to kind of do a real quick debt service 101. Then the transition point will be Mr. Goffey talking about our current debt mapping, what's out there, and talking a little bit about the debt service itself and what going forward we can expect to see both with our debt service levy and possible uses for that levy which would require some action on the part of the council. And then we'll be transitioning to part two on the agenda which is discussion of potential projects that we've all kind of talked about, touched on over the course of the past year relative to what we could be doing with a no tax increase bond issue. Just to kind of get started and dive into this, debt service is really exactly what the name implies. When we need to do a major project just like you would at home, there are often times where you haven't been able to put enough into the coffee can of projects and so you have to go out and you've got to take out a loan. It's really in its simplest form, it's nothing more than a mortgage. And the money that you garner from taking the loan, in the case of geo-bond issues, is called the project fund. And that always gets, I mean, that's just the money you get. You spend that out based on the projects that the voters have approved to be done relative to the ballot issue that's associated with it. Paying off the loan is what is called debt service. And we pay off that loan by setting, when the voters approve the bond issue, what they are actually approving is the ability for the city to do whatever it takes to garner enough money to make the debt service on the loan that has been taken. They're actually approving debt rather than approving, they know the projects that are associated with it, but they're approving debt of the city. Currently, our debt service levy is 7170. And if I could ask you, if you've all got your packets with you, if I could ask you to turn to this sheet in your packet which is directly from our budget. The, what you see on here is the property tax that is garnered, that 1,931,743, is the amount that is garnered with using the 71.7 cents that is our debt service levy currently. Then there's some interest, some very little interest on that money. And then penalties that are associated with that are actually penalties for late payment on this particular debt or on this particular amount when the property tax bills go out, when people pay late, we have to ascribe that to penalties. The reason the debt service fund is its own fund is because you are not allowed to, as state statute puts it, you cannot co-mingle the revenues that are raised using the debt service levy with our other levies which is the general fund levy and the park fund levy that also garner funds. Those can't be co-mingled in any way. These have to stand alone. And the reason for that is because we have to prove up both the amount that we are garnering and that it's not too much, and we have to show the voters that we are able to make payments on the loan. Underneath that, under expenditures, you see the fees that we have to pay to the various paying agents which is, United Missouri Bank is a paying agent. They hold the bond issues for us. First Bank of Missouri in Kansas is a paying agent, a trustee if you will. So these are trustees' fees. And then you actually see the general obligation bond issues underneath that that are associated with our current debt. Well, I'll be coming back to this sheet when we talk about the situation that we're now The amount of debt that the city is allowed to take out at any given time is called the legal debt margin. And the legal debt margin for a city, for a municipality, is 20% of the total assessed valuation of the city. And that's why at the bottom of that sheet, you see the total assessed valuation, and then underneath that you see the line, legal debt margin. That is the total amount of debt at any given time that the city can have outstanding, 54,983 and change. The debt margin is actually divided into two categories. That 20%, 10% of the 20%, or 50% of the 20%, half of it, is represented in what is called general margin. General margin can be used for anything as far as taking out debt. If we were to, if the council decides that you want civic center elements to be in a final no tax increase bond issue at that time, that would have to come out of general debt. And then the second component of that, the other 50%, is specific, what's called specific margin. It's the other 10% of the 20%. Specific margin can only be used for streets, storm systems, and to buy water work systems. Currently, again, that we have a cap of 54,983. Our current total legal debt margin then of that 54 million, we have current total debt of $18,672,373. Leaves a total of $36,311,353 that we could incur. Of the $36,311, 23,500 is in general debt and specific debt, 12,730. We have a lot of margin out there that we could still use and debt service up if the voters were to approve it. So margin isn't an issue for us like it is for some other cities. Two years ago, now to the situation we currently find ourselves in. Two years ago, the city refunded, for those of you who were here, you may remember, we refunded two bond issues, one in December, one in January, and we saved ourselves about a little over $2 million in debt service payments over the life of those debt service issues. That represents a considerable reduction in any given year of the amount of debt service that you need. We also, and we'll get back to this, you will note from the sheet, under, from the same summary sheet, that underneath the Series 2000, Final Payment Due This Year, you see a $685,000 payment. That's going to factor into our discussion about a no tax increase bond issue. The current debt again is 7170. Last September, the council rolled back to 7170 from what could have been 7518. The year before that, which was before we refunded the two issues at a savings of $2 million, the amount of the debt service levy that the council could have charged was 97.28 cents. So you see the considerable drop in the amount from 97.28 to 7518 that we could have actually How do we garner those? If you go to the next sheet, which is what's called the Form C calculation, our levy is broken down again into three parts. We have the general fund levy, we have the parks levy, and we have the debt service levy. General fund levy and parks levy are subject to, you've all heard this, the Hancock Amendment. There is a different form and a different format that is used to calculate your debt service levy. Again, the voters approve debt service, not projects themselves. The Form C is what we use each year to determine how we would get to that 7518 levy or that 9728 levy. And the short form of all the lines that are on here is, in any given year, when these come in, you are allowed to garner enough to make the current year's debt service payment, the next year's debt service payment, and garner up to 10% in fees that would be charged by your trustees on those. Any questions so far? So, again, using the Form C calculation, we get to, in the current year, 7518, we could have charged, we lowered that to 7170. And now, flipping back to the summary sheet, you see that at the end of this year, $685,000 will be paid and an entire bond issue will go away. You will also note that if you look at 2013, 2014 projected, which in the case of debt service is exact because we know what it is at budget time, you see 336,730 worth of payments dropping to 172 this year. You see 543,500 dropping to 202 this year. Those are the drops in yearly debt service that led to this drastic reduction down to the 7518 from the 92. Now losing an entire bond issue means that we no longer have those debt service payments associated with that 2,000 issuance. What does that mean? That means that we have the ability now to go for a no tax increase bond issue which you've heard some people, and you may have seen Councilmember Hugh Box write up, if you don't go for the no tax increase bond issue, you will lose, the tax levy necessarily drops associated with that because we would only be able to garner so much necessary to make the new payments. And Mr. Goffey's going to go over all of that, and you probably saw them on his debt map, that it's another considerable drop having lost that bond issue. The issue with lowering it and not taking advantage of keeping it where it is with no additional taxes charged to our taxpayers here in the city. Once, and we've seen this bear itself out time and time again, in fact, Cindy and I were just now talking about it because Pleasant Hill found themselves in this situation just a few years ago. They let the levy drop rather than going for a no tax increase bond issue to keep it bolstered. Once you do that, if there is any need, drastic need that the council sees come up, the only way to get the money back is to raise taxes from where people then currently are. That is a very, very difficult task on the part of the council. And the tendency is to see situations reach dire points with, let's say that it was a street issue or a water infrastructure issue, you tend to see them get almost beyond the point of no return before the taxpayers actually see that in front of them harshly enough that they're willing to go for a tax increase on the debt service levy. So that's the reason staff will always recommend, that we won't always recommend necessarily a tax increase from where we currently are, but we would always recommend that the council see the need for keeping the ability to have that debt available to you at any given time. That being said, we are going to be in a situation next year, again, with this $685,000 payment dropping off, the lower payments associated with the other bond issues, where we can go for a no tax increase bond issue, just explain the reverse of that, of course. And Todd's going to kind of go through, well, by the way, for, if anybody does not know, this is Todd Goffey. He is our independent financial advisor, but I think you've all met him on numerous occasions. Todd's going to go through the scenarios that are presented to us for either a 2016 no tax increase bond issue or a 2017 no tax increase bond issue. Todd?
Good evening. I think before we get into the information that we had put together, a couple of things I might expand on that Mr. Fearborn touched on is, this is an unlimited tax general obligation pledge. And what that means is that you're obligated to impose whatever levy is needed in order to repay your obligations. Some people also call that full faith and credit. And so, you know, we believe that the 71 cents, 7170, is adequate to cover the debt service now and going forward. That's based on an assessed valuation number. If for some reason that assessed valuation number dropped in half, in theory, that levy would need to double in order to make those payments. So that's really one of the reasons why your bonds and all general obligation bonds from issuers in the state of Missouri can get such good bond ratings and have such strong demand from investors is that they're willing to take on that full faith and credit that the city's going to make the payment. So the general obligation bond issue is the only one that is like that as opposed to some other types of bond issues that cities will impose. So that's an important part to consider. The other thing which Jim mentioned is, you know, those dollars cannot be co-mingled with any other funds. And really, the money that is generated from that debt levy is a single purpose. It can only be used to repay principal and interest on general obligation bonds, period. And so there's no, it can't be transferred to any other fund. It can't even be used, let's say you've got extra money in the debt service fund and you've got a pay-as-you-go project that you want to do, you can't use that money for that. It can only be used to pay principal and interest on general obligation bonds. That's important as we kind of go through this. The Form C calculation, and we'll kind of go through what a real-life projection might look like, but if you keep in mind with your options, you either need to have more debt service through voted general obligation bond issues, you could have a lower levy if you get into a situation where when you go through the Form C calculation, you have more balance in the debt service fund than what the state auditor would allow you to levy for, or you have the option to basically prepay bonds early that you already have outstanding. So those are kind of the three options, and all that really revolves around, back to that concept of those dollars can only be used for principal and interest on general obligation bonds. I went back and looked at the history of the 7170 debt levy, and that's been in place since 2005. So there's a long history in Rainmore of having that debt levy imposed. And even prior to 2005, it was 7100. So it's been at or around that level for a long, long time. And that's been very strategic, very thoughtful on the part of the board and staff to keep that debt levy in place to provide for future needs, but also to make sure that it's covering your existing debt service obligations. I also, and kind of going back through my notes, I had a memo going back to 2004 that staff had put together and shared with the council at that point that discussed some of these very same concepts, and I think we updated that again in 2006 and maybe a couple of other times since then. So what, you know, what we're saying is nothing new. And this is something that Cindy monitors on an annual basis. We help out with looking at those projections and trying to look into the future a little bit to make sure you have the best information available to you, but also maintain the most flexibility to provide for not only your existing debt payments, but also to try to identify opportunities that you can take care of future capital improvements. So with that, I'm going to get to the information that looks like this, and we've got those numbers, those pages numbered. Certainly not going to go through all of that in any great detail. I'm going to try to jump through and hit kind of the pages I think are the most important. But if you have specific questions, obviously, we'd be glad to address those as they arrive. Section one is what we call a debt map, and it really begins on page two, it's numbered at the bottom. And it is blue, but I see you've got black and white copies, so I'll try not to refer to colors. But basically, page two is all five issues that are general obligation bonds. And that's really the focus of our discussion tonight. And I realize those numbers get to be small to get everything to fit on there, but basically what we're showing is what the original par amount of those bonds were, when the call date is, whether it was for a new project or whether it was for a refunding. And then you'll see principal amounts for each year as well as interest rates that fall under the column that's labeled coupon. And so we've got those for all of the general obligation bond issues on page two. You'll also see issues on pages three and four, but those are for other types of bond issues and really don't have anything to do with the debt service levy or with the discussion tonight. But nevertheless, those are obligations of a different type that is outstanding. If you get onto page five and six, those show the individual principal and interest payments for each of those general obligation bond issues that are outstanding. There's four issues on page five. Jump over to page six, there's two more issues that are outstanding. And then at the far right-hand column on page six, you can see what the fiscal year totals are for the total principal and interest that would be paid in any fiscal year, beginning with the current fiscal year and then going on out towards the final year, which would be 2027. So when we get ready to set the debt service levy, these are the amounts that get transferred over to this Form C that's going to assist in determining what amount of debt levy is needed. I'm going to skip pages seven through 11 because those are other types of bond issues that certainly you have payments that need to be made that are coming from other sources, but it's not from the debt service fund. So maybe just pause right there quickly in terms of what all those numbers were. Basically, it's just showing what your obligations are this year as well as each and every year. Those are fixed payments. When the city issues bonds, they're, we're issuing fixed rate bonds, so we know at the time of closing exactly what those payments are going to be going forward.
And one of the reasons the schedules are so important, besides great bedtime reading, is what we try to do to the extent possible is keep our payments in any given year from dramatically changing so that we can better predict and schedule things out like a no tax increase bond issue. If they're, the flatter they are, the better for that. And we know when issues are going to be dropping off and how we can schedule things out. It's also a little easier on our voters and our taxpaying public because you don't have to see those dramatic spikes up and down in the debt service levy to take care of a payment that we're obligated to make.
Just so I understand, more versed in personal finance than city finance, but just to check for understanding, basically what you've told us, it's better, it's actually imprudent for a city to, as an individual, I want to pay off all my debt. I don't want to have any debt. But for a city, it makes more sense to carry and manage debt as you go forward, otherwise you basically reduce free cash flow for emergency projects that might come up. Is that a correct assessment?
Yes. The, yes, it is. You don't, the city, you all know, and you've seen the list, there's no denying need. I would say that there is, is not an item on that list that is not a need or a want that has been expressed by the voters, not born of the council. So to address those, you absolutely, it's absolutely prudent to, when you are in situations where you are not having to increase someone's taxes, to take a look at those needs and wants and address them in the least painful way possible. Because if we move forward without doing that, now you're talking pure need and dire need before someone is going to have their taxes increased.
Just to follow up on that, some of the consequences you've already explained to us, but one that I'm kind of curious about, and it may be folklore or what, but by us going into out of debt and not approving more debt, would that affect our credit rating?
No, I can't say that it would. The factors that are, there is a factor within your credit rating that they always ask about, which is, they want to make sure that you have a plan. They're very big on planning. And to the extent that it was available with need, unused, they'd mark that, they'd make note of that, but I can't say that it would impact the credit rating.
So with that, there, the two options that you see, and they're by no means the only two options, but basically just for a framework for the discussion, what we put together would be an option to go to the voters in April of 2016 with a no tax increase bond issue, or if the timeline wasn't conducive to reflect what an April of 2017 bond election would look like. Those two dates would be four sevens. Bond elections, there are some dates that require two-thirds, so we always try to stay away from the two-thirds bond elections if at all possible. But by no means are those the only two options. It's just that that's what we've chosen to kind of show you tonight for an example. So if you would turn to page 13, we show a timeline of events for an April 2016 bond election. And as we're doing today, exploring project ideas, amounts, timing, that is ongoing and has been going on for some time. And I believe you're going to discuss more of that after this portion of the presentation. And then when we get into the summer, the reason why that's important is that many of you will recall that you have your tax rate hearing generally in August. This is after the county sends out the assessed valuations at some point this summer. You go through a very detailed process, you have a public hearing, and then the levies are established prior to September 1st and sent down to the county as well as the state auditor's office. So as we go through that Form C calculation this summer is where we'll need to make a decision on what to do going forward. And so with that, if we're talking about an April 16 bond election, in order to maintain the debt levy at 7170, what we would consider doing is taking $550,000 out of the debt service fund and using that to prepay some existing bonds. And then you'll, I'll kind of repeat this again, that keep in mind, in the debt service fund, you can only use those dollars to pay principal and interest on only use those dollars to pay principal and interest on bonds. And so this defeasance falls in line with that concept. And so you're, in essence, using those dollars to make a prepayment on bonds that you already have outstanding. That would need to be done this summer, and then that would allow you to maintain the 7-1-7-0 debt levy. And then you would have your election, April of 2016. Those bonds would then be issued, and we believe that, given pretty conservative growth rates and assessed valuation, that those additional $9.75 million of bonds that would be issued could be repaid with the existing debt levy of 7-1-7-0. So you pay your existing bonds, you would issue these additional bonds, and like we'd done in the past, we'd tell the voters that the debt levy will remain at 7-1-7-0, so no tax increase.
Okay, and so I appreciate you saying that. So again, for the last two years, I've had the opportunity to participate in this in August. And I know that every time we hit the dais, there's that instinctive urge to want to reduce taxes. We see that. But to me, and I'm asking for validation here, the way I'm interpreting this is, is if we lower that 7-1-7, while that is attractive, from a personal standpoint, it's synonymous to me with like a credit card, where we're lowering the minimum payment requirement, but we're still leaving the amount having to be paid, and in fact, may have to pay more later. But based on what you just told me also, if we change that 7-1-7 this year, that could tinker with the amount of the bond issuance later and our ability to service that. Is that correct?
It would, and even the greater impact is that now, if you have needs, and I know you've got capital needs now, and you'll have capital needs in the future, but when it comes time to address those, now instead of going to the voters in April of 16 with a no-tax increase bond issue, now you have to go back to them and ask for a tax increase.
If there was a time that, say, we did let that happen and wanted to go back and ask for a tax increase, would we still look at an April election cycle, or would another cycle be easier?
It would simply depend on the year. But definitely, if you are going for a tax increase bond issue, you want it to require the lowest percentage of the possible.
Right. So April's our majority, and then other cycles are two-thirds, is that what?
April's always a good time to go.
I can... The rule on that, I mean, as you know, Missouri rules are a little quirky, but in an odd-numbered year, the April election is the only four-sevenths election. Okay? So if you were voting in August or November of this year, it would be two-thirds. In an even-numbered year, you get April, August, and November are all four-sevenths elections. So you have more opportunities in an even-numbered year than what you do in odd-numbered years. Okay. So if you go to pages 14 and 15, you'll see a sample Form C calculation. The calculation on page 14, you'll see is from last summer, and you've already seen that before because it's already occurred. And as Mr. Fearborn alluded to earlier, when that calculation was done, you could have imposed a debt levy of 74 cents. At the time of going through the process last year, you chose to maintain the 7-1-7-0 in the debt levy, even though you could have increased that higher. And again, I think that goes back to, you've got a long history of imposing 7-1-7-0, and we believe that's sufficient enough to cover the existing bonds that you have outstanding.
Just a quick question. That 74 cents, how does that... Does it go with the valuation on your house per thousand, or how does that work out?
It's all based on assessed valuation. So it looks at all the different categories of assessed valuation in the cities. So it's commercial real estate, residential real estate, a little bit of ag property, and then personal property. So all those categories added together create what's known as your assessed valuation that gets reported to you by the county.
What, 74 cents per thousand?
As it... Yeah, as it would apply to your house, the calculation we always use, $200,000 house is residential, so the assessed valuation is .19 of that $200,000 divided by 100, which we call points, or I've always called them points. So your assessed valuation divided by 100 times the levy. And our total levy is the debt service, again, with the general in the park, and this year it's 1.3068, which represents, I believe, don't quote me on this, but I think it's 16.48% of the overall property tax bill. The school district is obviously the highest. They're about three-quarters of the property tax bill.
So page 14 ironically is the 14 calculation. That's totally coincidental. But so 74 cents could have been imposed. If we go to page 15, this is a preliminary calculation that, based on a 1% growth in assessed valuation, keep in mind, we won't know that number until we get well into the summer. But assuming a 1% growth, we go through the calculation that's on this Form C is the same calculation that gets used year in, year out. So the mechanics are all the same. But as you go through the math, and you come up with the revenue that's required for this year's calculation, you can see that that maximum went from 74 cents, now it's down to 55 cents.
Does that take into consideration the defeased amount of the 550?
No, sir. So the numbers really just kind of work down through, and the reasons why that are is that, one, the assessed valuation's grown a little bit, and then the debt service that you're paying has come down a little bit. And you know, this, going back to the refundings in 2012 and 2013, I mean, that was a strategic decision that the council made at that time to take advantage of very, very low interest rates, and it's saving the taxpayers $2.3 million over the life of the bond. So you know, the things that you've done, I mean, it's very good, very thoughtful, and it's really what's, you know, created the opportunity that you've got now to maintain that levy, but also to have an opportunity to get before the voters in the next couple of years to see if they want to take on additional capital improvements without raising their taxes. If you go to page 16 now, this, you'll notice that it does say "after defeasance." So what we've, in essence, done here is we've taken into account pulling $550,000 out of the debt service fund to defees a portion of the 2019 maturity of the 2013 bonds. I don't want us to get completely locked on at this point to the specific bonds that would be defeased, because we're still going to continue to analyze that, and if we think there's a more efficient solution, then we'll propose that. But the key point is that by pulling out that $550,000, it's going to lower the balance that you have in the debt service fund at the end of this calendar year. And you'll see, when we do that in the shaded box, now the maximum levy that you could impose is 7-5-2-8, which is very similar to what it was last year. And of course, the goal would be not to impose a 7-5-2-8, but to continue with the 7-1-7-0 that you've had.
Growth rates in the double digits. In fact, we had a four-year period where we alternated, I think it was 18 in the assessment years and 12 in the growth years. And we're not going to see those for quite some time, I'm sure.
Very minimal growth, it would seem that that's probably not going to be the norm either. But for purposes of this analysis, we've assumed a 1% growth. If you see a reduction in assessed valuation, then this analysis is going to change pretty substantially. If you'd happen to see 5%, 10% assessed valuation growth, then that's going to result in changes as well. The other column that I draw your attention to there is right next to the assessed valuation growth column, and that's the tax levy. And so you can see on our projections that we believe the 7-1-7-0 will be sufficient to cover all of your existing bonds, as well as the additional $9.7 million that could be issued pending voter approval next April. The rest of those pages, I'm not going to go through those. I'll just kind of real briefly mention those. Page 20 is how we kind of break down where all the different revenues are coming from in the debt service fund. We've got a 98% collection rate that's assumed. There's some minimal level of interest income that comes in. Page 21 shows a detail on an annual basis on all of the outstanding bond issues. You'll see in that next-to-last column, it says projected 2016 debt service. If you chose to move forward, if the voters approved bonds, then that's what that debt service could look like. We've also made projections on interest rate. If you're in the market today, you would be well below 4%. We've assumed 4.75% just to be conservative. Page 22, I'll maybe make a little more mention to. That is the debt capacity calculation, or what Mr. Fearborn referred to as debt margin. You'll see some similar numbers there, 20% of assessed valuation. You do get to add back to your debt margin the balance that you have in the debt service fund. And then from that, we subtract out what your outstanding principal amount is to come up with what is votable debt capacity. You could never go to an election where you'd be voting more than what your legal capacity is. But as you can see, for an April 16 election, you could, under Missouri constitution, you could ask the voters for $41 million. That wouldn't be with a... That would require a tax increase. But if you so chose, if the need was there, you could go up to that. And so you can see why the 9.7 million, why we believe that's well within your legal right to vote. Some cities have challenges with that. Some school districts have challenges with that, where they get right up against the debt margin. And then there's only two ways to work around that. You've got to get more assessed valuation, and you have to pay off existing bonds. With that, I'll go to page 24, and this is kind of the beginning of that second option. So if April of 2016, that's what we just went through in terms of a potential bond election, this is a whole new section that basically says, forget about April 16, we're going to focus on April of 2017. So very, very similar. If you go to page 25, you'll see kind of the timelines there. One thing that is a big difference with a 17 election is that we need to look at that Form C calculation, not only for this summer, but we also need to look at what it would be next summer in 2060. And so when we do that, what basically it comes back to, instead of utilizing $550,000 to prepay existing bonds, in this instance, what we're looking to do is use about 1.1 million to prepay existing bonds. And as we go through the calculation, I'll kind of explain that a little bit more. Page 26, that's exactly what you just saw on page 14. The same with page 27. You'll see that 55 cent maximum levy again. That's assuming you don't do anything. And then you'll see on page 28 is the projected summer of 2015 calculation after the defeasance. And so this is after pulling 1.1 million out of the debt service fund to prepay prior bond issues. You'll see by lowering that debt, lowering the balance further, what that does on the Form C calculation is it actually allows you to impose even a higher debt levy, if you look at it just in one year at a time. Obviously, just the same way that when the other calculation showed 75 cents, we're going to continue, assuming this is what the council's pleasure would be, would be to impose a 7-1-7-0. The same case here, even though this specific calculation would show 94 cents, the intent would be to continue to levy the 7-1-7-0. And I guess the 94 cents really is very similar to the calculation from two years ago. So you know, you're not... We're not really covering any new ground here. You've been, you've had the ability in the past to impose 95 cents and have always continued to levy the 7-1-7-0. Moving to page 29, we're going to jump ahead one year to summer of 16. And so with the defeasance, we get to the summer of 16, you'll see the maximum levy there is back to 75 cents. And really, what we did here, we kind of began with the end in mind. We knew in summer of 16 that we wanted to shoot for a maximum levy of 75 cents. And so that really drove the solution that you see on page 28. That's what drove that solution. And so under this option, this April 17 election option, we would continue to impose 7-1-7-0 this August. We'd have the defeasance made, and then when we'd get to the summer... We'd have the defeasance made, and then when we'd get to the summer of 2016, the maximum levy would be 75 cents. But in keeping with tradition, we would continue with the 7-1-7-0. Then going on to page thirty, we'd get to spring of 2017, and at that point, you could put before the voters a no-tax-increase bond election of $10.5 million. And the thought would be just to continue on with the 7-1-7-0.
Any questions?
Thanks. Just a quick question, and maybe you've covered this somewhere, but it didn't make sense to me. I'm just curious, so where, how did you figure out the different bond amounts? The fund, page twenty-two, you mentioned that our capacity would be 41,000, and I am in no way suggesting that we need that much money, our 41 million. So where did the 9.75 and 10.5 come from? Is it a percentage? Can you help me understand that?
Absolutely. And really, where those numbers are coming from is it's driven by what are the revenues that are available from maintaining the 71 cent debt levy? And so we go through and analyze and say, what is the maximum amount of bonds that could be issued that continue to maintain the 7-1-7-0?
So to summarize, I'm looking at the difference here. And so if we extend out one election year, basically, the next year, we have to work harder because we have to get a higher voter response, also, we can get an extra $750,000, but yet we have to defees another 550 to get that. And then judging on your debt service fund charts, our remaining debt capacity compared to the previous year is worse, is lower. So we're still better at April 16 versus the 17.
I'm not sure that I would couch it in terms of your better or your worse. I mean, I think there's a couple of considerations. I mean, one benefit of April 17 is that you can increase your size to $10.5 million. So if the 9,75 doesn't provide sufficient funds to cover your project needs, then by waiting, you could get to a higher bond amount. The disadvantage of doing that is just a matter of time. I mean, you've got needs now, and so do you want to delay that until April of 17? And then you also take on interest rate risk. I mean, a lot of people think that, oh, the longer we wait, two things are going to happen. Project costs are going to go up, and interest rates are going to go up. And so that's certainly a real risk, that, you know, we could try to wait till 17, but having that higher bond issue amount could quickly get eroded because now you've got higher project cost and higher interest rates.
And we give you 17 as an option because it's there, because we could do that if, as the process moves forward into the summer, if there was cloudiness about what, you know, the council wanted to do with the project funds, if there was additional debate that was associated, the window can be extended if the council determined that they wanted to do that. The two major issues, Todd, hit very succinctly as far as the risks associated.
In terms of timing for a bond election, the, I can look and see what the exact date is for April of 16, for, yeah, April of 16, but the filing deadline, as you probably know, is 10 Tuesdays prior to that election date. So it's going to be about the last Tuesday in January. So that, you know, you need to, in terms of your thinking, you need to, you know, think in terms of you got till your, probably your first meeting in January to make a decision on whether to call the bond election or not, and then, you know, back up from there in terms of whatever process that you would go through of identifying the different projects. We're showing a single $9.75 million bond issue, but just the same way that Mr. Fearborn mentioned, the two different categories. If you've got projects that aren't like projects, you can't, you can't combine those all together into one single bond issue. You'd have to have separate bond issues.
As an example, in 2007, we had two bond issues. One was for the Trails project. There were Parks and Recreation and Transportation, the two bond issues.
So just looking at like the 9.75, is, how much of that would we actually spend on the project? Are there costs associated with that that would come like off the top before we consider spending on the project?
There are. The 9.75 would be a maximum, Todd? Eight to 10?
Probably 1.5%, 2% tops for kind of issuance costs that would come off of that. Many times, what we're able to do, depending upon the market at the time the bonds are sold, is to sell a portion of all the bonds at a premium to where you actually still drive the $9.75 million to the project account. But I think the safest thing for planning purposes would be to assume 98% of the 9,750 as available project dollars.
And as a reminder to the council, you do have in the restricted fund, 1.5 million dollars that factors into all of the projects that you're considering.
Is there a timeframe on spending it? You know, we talked about splitting it up into different projects. Does it have to be done in the calendar year?
No. As a matter of fact, for most of these projects, it's impossible to get it done in that calendar year. There is, Todd, do you want to explain arbitrage to the council? Because this is a lot of bond...
You don't want to do that?
Basically, we can't make money on our money. Otherwise, the, and the longer you hold on to it, the more you have to be cognizant of the fact that you, I believe, the short form of that is, you can't make more in interest on your money than the interest you are paying on the bond issue. Is that a fair and very elementary, even Jim Fearborn can understand it?
It's an IRS restriction that at the time the bonds are issued, you have to reasonably expect to spend the proceeds within three years. And there's a lot of legal documents that get signed, and so the mayor would be signing the certificate that says, yes, the city reasonably believes the money would be spent within three years. It's not the end of the world. If it, if something comes up and something happens that we didn't foresee, it's okay. The only thing that happens is that after the end of the three-year period, any monies that are remaining become what's called yield restricted. And so even if you could earn a rate of return greater than what the tax exempt rate is on the bonds, which you can under current market conditions, but even if you could at that point, you're prohibited from doing that.
Any other questions so far?
So basically, that restriction is trying to ensure that we don't ask for money that we really don't need, in a way. If we're able to make money off of the taxes that are brought in with interest, if we're not spending it, there's maybe not, there wasn't a need to ask the taxpayers for that money in the first place if we were not actually going to use it towards projects. Is that...
I couch it more in, more keeping our promises. We've promised the voters, the following projects are going to be done with the money you've entrusted us with. If we're not doing them, there's a third party out there making sure that they get done.
From the federal government's perspective, you're issuing tax-exempt municipal securities, and they're exempt from both federal and Missouri income taxes. So the way the U.S. Treasury looks at it is, it's a cost to them for anybody that issues tax-exempt bonds, because they would have otherwise gotten taxable income off that from the federal government's perspective. And so they don't want local governmental entities going out, issuing bonds at 3%, and then turning around and investing those dollars at 5% and just basically arbitraging those dollars for five, 10, 20 years. So that's why these restrictions are in place to kind of prohibit you from even being in a position of where you could do that. And it used to happen back in the late 80s. That was not uncommon.
Tax exempt unless you're on Social Security, right?
What's that?
Tax exempt unless you're on Social Security.
Well, I'm not able to provide tax advice to you.
Anyway, I did have a question, though. What would happen in the event, maybe you'd have reduced valuations on your home? What would happen to the payments, I mean, the tax, the overall taxes you're going to bring in?
Well, and as Mr. Goffey alluded to, there's, one of the reasons you are allowed to collect what you can collect as far as the next year is concerned is if there was a natural disaster and assessed valuations just dramatically dropped. But for an individual, the assessed valuation on your home, if the assessed valuation on your home goes down and the levy remains the same, you're paying less in taxes. Anything else on a very complicated issue? And if you do have any questions relative to how the debt service is applied, et cetera, at any given time, please feel free to call Mr. Goffey. That would then lead into our next session on the agenda, sir, if you're okay with just dovetailing in. Thank you. Ms. Watson is going to hand out a much thicker version of what you have in your packet that gives a lot of detail. It's actually our CIP program. We modified it a little bit to detail out each of the projects, and we're going to kind of run down those with you. Just what I, what I really want to emphasize to the council is, as Mr. Goffey indicated, there is a, there is, the council does not have to make final decisions associated with this. We, staff would actually be a little bit more comfortable with the beginning of December, and by that time, we will have had many meetings relative to these projects and what the council, if the council would like to see us going forward, what they would like to see included in one or more bonded, or ballot issues going before the voters. What you have in front of you tonight, however, is the preliminary draft with, especially when we get to some plans and some projects relative to parks, these are conceptual only. They're things we've heard from the city council. They're, with the Civic Center issues, of course, what you see there are the initial elements that were the yes cards from the council's exercise on the Civic Center that you did want to see. Some parks improvements that the Parks Board has talked about, and the council has also heard about some of these. Stormwater, then there's some transportation and other maintenance items that staff has been kind of kicking around. We hear about this massive curb issue that we all know we have here in the city, and it's going to be a number of years until we can get through that. We thought we'd throw that in for council consideration if you wanted to do it all at once and get that past us. Street construction, we have some items in there, and so what we'd like to do is just kind of step down these, but the council has had the opportunity to see these since last Thursday. And if you have any general questions, we just thought that this could be an initial freewheeling discussion of what you see on here. Don't, staff is not looking for any kind of decision from the council tonight on these. But if you do have questions relative to some of these, or what staff thought might be on some of these, or what the genesis of them was, we thought that this would be a good time to introduce this. And then after we finish that, I'd kind of like to move forward with the schedule of how staff would recommend the council proceed on looking at these. Again, what you see with the Civic Center, as we go down that list, these were the items from the card exercise that the council said they would like to see. Some of these could be impacted by the million and a half per some of our previous discussions that is in the restricted revenue, or in the, yeah, in the restricted revenue fund. The, and as you go through the pages, you see the detail on each of those. The one that I would point out to the council from this, all of these are specific items that may or may not be a decision-making process on the council as to whether or not it's a building, or is it several locations within the city? And that's why we present them to you as separate detail items on here. You may decide you don't want all of these under one roof. You may decide at this point in time, knowing the amounts that we're going to have available to us, that you don't want some of them at all. You may not want, feel that this is the time to do any of these within this particular bond issue, although I would say to the council that at least some of these were the reason that we were initially talking about a no-tax-increase bond issue. The two I draw to your attention specifically, though, are the sustainable options, which is the second to the last, and the administrative spaces. The administrative spaces that is on there was in consideration of one big building and the need to have a front office with sidelines. And when you get to that page, you'll see all of the elements that were included in administrative spaces. If the council were to go with a multifaceted approach to any of those items where one was located here, one was located there, that item would necessarily drop off. It may be replaced by something, but that item would necessarily drop off. The same thing would go for the sustainable options. That was being considered within the context of an entire building and LEED certified, et cetera, et cetera. So both of those, just wanted to draw to your attention very, very briefly. Any questions or thoughts you might have on the Civic Center items that we could answer at this time in these early stages? I know a lot of these, you all have been over during the course of several workshops, so there may not be too many here this evening as we begin. so there may not be too many here this evening as we begin.
Well, speaking of that, this community room, the 300-person community room, we'd already kind of planned on it with the cash we had on hand, so couldn't that just be taken out of the whole bond thing and just fast-tracked and get it done?
Again, the million and a half for anything that's in here, quite frankly, the million and a half was set aside to specifically address elements that were within the civic center. So, if the council wanted to pull anything out with a different concept plan for that money, staff could put that together very, very quickly because that is simply council directing staff to go ahead and spend those funds on the following item, so it wouldn't be subject to the same timeline that's associated with the bond issue, unless the council wanted to do it in conjunction with. That's another part of the plan.
Two questions, Mr. Fearborn. One, this still does not anticipate cost of land acquisition as part of this, is that correct?
Correct.
And then, required building support spaces would kind of go in with the sustainable options and administrative space, correct? Because that number's based on the big building, and if you, if we split this up into multiple spaces, that number would obviously be split up among those others and could change.
It would necessarily change. Obviously, any particular element will need some support to it, but yes. Any others on the civic center for right now?
Great.
Parks improvement, I'm actually going to ask Mr. Mustin on two of these because they're mystery items until you got the book tonight, which is the Hawkeridge Park items, and I'm just going to ask him to kind of address that. What I, you'll probably hear me say this another couple times till you're sick of it. Just please remember, all of these are conceptual at this point. It will be up to the council to draw this diagram for us. Mr. Mustin?
Thank you, sir. Specifically addressing the Hawkeridge Park Phase 2, that is the connecting road, okay, that would be the connecting road that you see there, the parking areas, and one parking area that's not on this particular map, but it is on the south side of the lake, and it also includes a picnic shelter. So, that would be the Phase 2, the infrastructure basically of the park to make that more usable for the residents. So, that is Phase 2. Phase 3, that is listed on there, Park Board indicated that, and the original master plan was a playground, but they would like to include that as an all-inclusive ADA accessible for persons with disabilities. So, it's a very unique type of a playground that's, they're highly expensive and rare to find, so it would be an amenity that would be extremely usable and feasible for Cass County area in particular. So, it would be a draw for most of our people in town and outside of the community. The next thing to highlight that we'd like to talk about is, like Mr. Fearborn said, a conceptual plan that the Park Board has discussed and many of you are interested in would have a domino effect. So, if you do one, you could really domino into another one, and that would be the soccer venue, removing the current soccer fields out of Recreation Park into its own facility. Now, what this does is, what you're seeing here is basically a fictitious piece of property. Initially, what the Park Board had wanted was about 80 acres, but I pared this down to about 55 acres because that seems more feasible within city limits to find a property 80 acres of flat land without so much work to be done is hard to find. So, we went with more of a 55 acre. So, we took a parcel off of the GIS map, the 55 acres, and just drew this concept. This allows us to have two synthetic fields that can be played year-round with another seven natural turf fields that includes a half-loop, walking trail, concessions, restrooms, a playground, and a picnic shelter. So, a park that can be used specifically for athletic, including soccer, lacrosse, football, flag football, those, so it would be a versatile facility, but also be something that can be used year-round with a shelter and a playground as well, and the trail. By moving soccer into its own facility like that, you open up that space at Recreation Park to add additional baseball fields, which are desperately needed, and basically you take two facilities and you make them more catering towards individual sports. So, Recreation Park becomes more of a baseball, softball facility, and there's a concept drawing within that, within your packet there that shows additional baseball fields in that area. By doing that, we domino into one more thing, which would be parking lot expansion, and as you can see there, if baseball is put into soccer, we can extend that into the block number one on the southeast corner there, which extends that and makes it a little larger parking area. And then, number two would be an idea, essentially if the parkhouse is replaced with a rec facility more suitable for the summer camp, we would need to add additional parking for that because that facility would be something that we would consider a rented facility as well, or used for volleyball tournaments, basketball practices, so we would need to increase the parking. So, that would add that parking lot, which is what many of you that have been around is the old salt shed where the salt land used to be, and you could still have a practice field there between that particular parking area and the tennis courts. So, that adds, that could add a potential 350 to 400 parking spaces right there. We currently use that as overflow parking just on grass, and if you went to the park this weekend, you saw several folks parking there. A third option would be one that I'm not excited about, but it is an option, and that is to expand the skate park parking lot across the street from the public works, but I don't think that that is necessary if you address the first two options first. So, that, those three ideas are things that would kind of tailor towards each other and one dependent upon the other. Now, obviously, there are some other options that you could do, but these are what we've presented as, recommendations from the Park Board.
And the reason that those are listed on your sheet with the dashes and indented is one follows from another. In other words, if we were moving the soccer fields out of Recreation Park, then that would make room for the additional baseball fields and the additional facilities there. Did want to point out, you have a Hawkeridge Park Phase 2 and 3. If you're wondering about Hawkeridge Park Phase 1, it is the trail that is being proposed and has already been approved by the Park Board around the lake down there, and we have applied for, we've applied for grant funds to pay for a portion of that. So, that would be off the table. They've committed to it out of normal funding to be done, so that would be paid for regardless of geo-bond funding.
Can you tell us a little bit more about the park camp rental facility space? What would that include?
Mr. Mustin?
Could you repeat it just?
Sorry, I'm not sure my mic was on. I said, can you just tell us a little bit more about what the park camp rental facility space would be like? Like, is it several, are you saying several classrooms? How could it be used besides camp?
Essentially, what this facility is, is virtually a replacement of the parkhouse. So, we would have some storage, an open gym area, a couple of classrooms, and some camp office space. Very, very minimal, not much of what you would consider a recreation center, more just of an athletic facility that we could use for camp because camp is centered and based out of Recreation Park. By moving camp outside of that facility, we really lose the ability to do a lot with what we're doing. But by adding something small like this with basically a gym, some goals inside, maybe volleyball courts on the inside, we increase our ability to not only house camp but program it year-round and not have a major impact of like what a high-wellness center or something like that would be because, you know, with the consideration of the civic center, you don't want to overdo something in that. We really want to replace it with our camp facility.
Sorry. I'm curious about the difference in price, quite honestly. If we can get kind of a gym space for $600,000, is that really reasonable considering with all of our civic center planning? We were looking at a single court gym costing $200,000.
When we were talking about the gym that you see up under the civic center, just as a reminder, that is a MAC gym with administrative office space attached, considerably more expensive than what would be being considered in a replacement-type gym, even smaller for the parkhouse. So, that's the considerable difference that you see in the price there. The parkhouse replacement would be what was necessary to hold summer camp, and I think that the difference that is in there is, you all remember what the MAC gym looks like. I mean, you can do anything in there at any time, and this would be more of like half of the original activity center that was over in Lee's Summit, if you remember that one where the water park has replaced it. That was pretty bare bones, two empty classrooms, a small kitchen, and a very small gym when it was originally built.
First of all, Mr. Mustin, I want to applaud you on your vision. I'm impressed of what we saw and the options you've given us. My question's going to seem a little strange. Why do we have an item for $1,000 on here? Well, I'm definitely turning that one over to Mr. Mustin.
I can answer that. This was a project that was put on the capital improvement list prior to me arriving here from the former director. I think it had grand ideas of even going underneath Huback Hill or a bridge that goes over to connect to a future greenway trail that isn't built. What I did was, frankly, I didn't feel comfortable proposing a project that led to nowhere. So, instead, I connected up, we went north on the sidewalk of Huback Hill and just did a crosswalk across to a future development where a developer would be required to connect a trail, and if I had my way and we had enough time, I probably would have removed that, but you had already seen that project listed, so I pared it down in hopes that you wouldn't bite.
And the original discussion for that was pretty grandiose. Possibility of a citizen walkway over the road, tunneling underneath the road to continue this trail, so you're actually seeing, as Mr. Mustin said, a drop-off, but it was originally discussed, so staff felt obligated to keep this on the list.
Comment. I'm not saying that the project was good or bad, it just, the amounts there and the two above that, I know at least at one point last year, Parks Board had enough unrestricted fund balance to cover that easily, not even touch a third of their unrestricted fund balance, am I correct? And Park Board has been working very, very diligently to come up with active projects that the council will be seeing for the upcoming years. They're doing, they took good direction from the council on what they need to be doing as far as spending those funds that we're languishing. So, you're going to see a good plan for projects coming from the Park Board this year. Again, your vision, I see future in your vision, not just we want, and that was one of the big things I was looking for, so great job.
That's a good park trail bridge. Isn't that a low-water bridge now? That with all the tubes under the, I'm just looking at the map.
Yes, sir, that's actually a low-water bridge there. The project's listed on there as a bridge, and actually what it is, is a restabilization of that because it's in the floodplain, and Mr. Crass has been helping and educating me on floodplain, and so, a bridge is not feasible at that area, but what we could do is, with some riprap and some stabilization, come in and firm that up because right now the flooding is undermining what the current culverts are doing. So, we actually talked about that, right, for this meeting, and he agrees that the amount listed is plenty to stabilize that and get that functioning the way it's supposed to be without getting undermined with the flooding.
I was going to ask about the bridges. There seems to be a lot of debris that catches right there. I thought maybe the bridge over that would kind of cure that problem as well.
Honestly, I don't, I don't know that a bridge is going to work in that area, and frankly, from what the discussions I've had with Mr. Crass, $25,000 wouldn't even budge placing a bridge in that area. I may have to ask him to help me on this one.
Mr. Mayor? The soccer venue, the 55 acres, do you have a place where you're going to put it now? Do you have an idea where it's going to go?
Not, not at this time. Obviously, anything closer to town, we have a lot of challenges as far as the nature of coming off of 58 and everything. We've got a lot of hills. You would probably be looking at the need to purchase land east of town. It's the flattest land we have.
One quick question I'll ask, just because, anybody who is from my neighborhood that walks the Rec Park Trail often will probably be wondering this. If we, if we add a trail in Rec Park, is it going to have all the places accessible?
That is the plan, and yes, when we talked with the contractor who built the other trails in town, some of the other trails that were concrete, we talked to him, and that is a total mill removal with the base and concrete trail. So, that should, and what our hopes is, we'll address at that time if this is a project that you decide to do, is to address those areas that are low and have water, standing
Anything else on the park section this time? Mike, you want to talk a little bit about your numbers relative to the curb project Just to depress everybody.
Sure. What this proposed funding would cover is the first 10-year program, or the curb that was identified during our curb survey a couple of years ago, which then led to the current 10-year curb program. It will not address all the curb in town that needs to be deteriorating, that is deteriorating or potentially will deteriorate. Unfortunately, anything constructed prior to about 2013 has the potential to deteriorate and is susceptible to the freeze-saw cycles. What it would do is address the first 10-year cycle that we are in, about the third year
And a very good question as far as, how long do we have to spend the money? The curb project, we can only get to so much a year, so this would be a classic project if it was added that would have to carry over from year to year. Street construction, this is one of the more interesting categories that we have now. First one on the list, Sunset Lane, and again, these are items that we've heard over time from different members of the public, different members of the city council. Sunset Lane, Bristol to Dutchman Acres, which is an interesting way to title that. Mike, why don't you kind of talk about this, how we came up with the number, and then maybe we can talk about some of the challenges that are associated? And then maybe we can talk about some of the challenges that are associated with this particular extension.
This came, came out of the, not the current citizen survey, but the prior citizen survey. Identified several areas of potential transportation improvements. One was north-south connectors through the city. So staff review, kind of looked at the map and looked for, for gaps that especially in areas that we don't see potential active development in the near future. So that was, that's how we arrived at, or that's how we selected this project. This project would connect basically the Evanbrook neighborhood to the Dutchmans Acres neighborhood. It would also provide a small extension westerly to Bristol, which would then connect the Brookside, the Brookside neighborhood as well there.
Questions on that? The second one on your list is the Old Mill extension to Huback Hill Road.
When, when North Cass Parkway was originally contemplated, it was a, it was contemplated as a limited access roadway, something similar to 291 north of Lake Winnebago. Four lane facility, access points every, every half mile. So the only, the only connection point to Stonegate that was contemplated in the south was at, was at Haystack. And with the redesign or reconfiguration of North Cass Parkway to more of a local, local arterial, there is a potential for another connection by extending Old Mill, which is now currently designed as a cul-de-sac. A few years ago, we did have some conversations with the, with the Good Ranch and looking at reconfiguring that. This, this project, it does a couple of things. One, it kind of shares the load for the southern part of Stonegate between Haystack and Old Mill. And it does provide a more direct, direct extension from, from Old Mill to Huback, Huback Hill Road.
Questions there? And one of the things I want to emphasize, Mike, Mike at the very beginning of his presentation did say it, with development dropped off, especially in some areas, normally the, it would be the expectation that a developer would be extending these roads. The question for the council to consider is, do you believe that extending the roads relieves a problem like the congestion that we hear about on the citizen surveys? Or would it spur development and building in the area? I think those are the critical elements if you're going to be adding these in.
Actually, to answer that Jim, I think it would actually do both, spur development and create more connector roads.
The third one, which is, which is under the same category, obviously not the same category of pricing, is 163rd Street from Fox Ridge Drive to Kentucky Road. Mr. Crass?
This project was on the 10-year road plan and proposed to be funded by excise tax. It was recently, recently removed in favor of doing maintenance activities. Staff sees this as a reliever and a project that would address the congestion issues on 58 Highway at the 49 Highway interchange by providing another connection point from Raymore to the 49, Interstate 49. Had the MODOT bond issue passed, they did plan to redo that interchange within a relatively short period of time. Fortunately, if you've been following the news, you know, that failed and has also created other, other problems for them. So that funding problem. So that, that interchange or improvements to that interchange is not on, not on the radar screen. They are proposing to do some improvements to 155th Street and then additional new interchanges south. So we, we see this connection point as a, as a reliever to, for, for northern, northern Raymore to get another connection point to 49 Highway.
Mr. Crass, what would be the, and I realize that it could and might change. What would be the anticipated configuration of that road? I'm assuming it would not be a parkway as far as, right?
It could be. I think we would look at what projected traffic, traffic needs is. I, I know from time to time, councilmen have heard feedback that it needs to be a four lane facility. I, I really do not think it needs to be a four lane facility. It could be something similar to Lucy Webb Road. Lucy Webb Road with, with the turn lanes and, and really what causes, what eats up the capacity is access points. So if you maintain access points at a reasonable spacing, like on Lucy Webb Road, the traffic, traffic will flow just fine. I don't think that small segment of road is going to necessitate being a four lane facility.
One of staff's challenges is when we, as we were going down the list on this particular one, is relative to the spurring development issue, what kind of development will it spur? And that candidly, there was some disagreement on the, on the, the part of staff as far as would it be residential, would it be, we had a lot of right of way here. Would it be residential? Would it be some light commercial? You could see some small strip centers perhaps in there. But it would all depend on who would eventually, quite frankly, purchase that land. We know that the, the current owner would have no interest in doing anything with it except for collecting the money that, that we paid them for purchase of the land to put the road in. This one would be primed, would be a prime one for development to pay for, but nothing's happening there. The, the eventual, and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but eventually 163rd Street could traverse the entire county if, if the different sections that in the future were meant to be put in. The long range plan for that would be for that to, to be a, a major, or it could be a major east west.
It, it, yes, it is currently, it currently connects Madison to 291. There, for a while there, there was a bridge that was out that was replaced a few years ago. So once, once Creekmore completes its development and completes the segment from Fox Ridge to the east, it will, it will span all the way from 291 to 49 Highway.
It'll be a major traffic point?
Yes.
The next one, and a couple of these, we're going to kind of try to combine together before I go on. Mr. Catterett, did you have anything on 163rd Street that you wanted to add to the conversation?
I do doubt, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Catterett was, was one of our, our major critiquers as we were going back and forth. So he was arguing with each of us in turn. It's always important to have that blackboard. If that vision were to happen, if we create 163 across there, we basically create a parallel to 58 Highway. You've got, that changes the whole configuration of the neighborhoods all the way across. When you basically put a thoroughfare through there. I know that's wanted, but there are downsides, certainly there's upsides and downsides that come with that. That, that was a significant component of, of what the, and again, there, all of these kind of fit together, especially when we're talking about the north side of, of 58 Highway. Next one on the list is 155th Street from Madison to Kentucky. And Mike, if you could talk about that one and especially the amount that we've given to the council. Thank you.
Well, if I may, I'd like to cover North Madison first because it kind of keys together there.
Sure.
With the, as, as currently configured, North Madison Street, North Agor Road is, is in pretty good shape for the, for the, for the property that, that abuts at the current level, level of development there. As Creekmore continues to develop and it, you know, they have pretty much, are probably two-thirds built out on the, on the west, on the east side of their development. There is a need to, there would be a need to improve Madison Street from 163rd Street to 155th Street to support traffic from the eastern side of that development. That then triggers the need for one of this, potentially the need to improvement, improve one of the streets that we get a lot of complaints about, and that being 155th Street west of, west of Madison all the way to Kentucky. Unfortunately, that, that road is split, half Kansas City, half, half Raymore. We have tried on several occasions and it is not on Kansas City's radar screen. They have no intention of putting it on their capital improvement plan. What you've seen out there recently is about the extent of the maintenance that they are able to, to do on that, that road. So what, what the, what the cost there represents is the, our estimate to do the full cost to reconstruct the road as it's currently configured as a rural section with an addition of a bike lane. And from Madison Street all the way to, to Kentucky or, because I believe, or possibly a little further west. I think the current project that's being completed by Grandview and Belton is to come all the way to Kentucky. So we would then connect there. We would continue with a rural, rural road. There isn't going to be any connections on the south side from, from Cooper, the dam is there and some other things. There may be one, one small cul-de-sac in the northeast corner of the development, but certainly a, a rural section road with a dedicated bike lane. Ditches also would allow us to do some, some water quality things there. There is really not there a need for a curb and gutter and storm sewer. So that, that's what the price represents. The next, the next road is Ward Road. That is another multi-jurisdictional road between Cass County and City of Raymore. City of Raymore actually has a very small portion of this road. It's basically what's in front of Ward Place, Ward Park Place and Alexander, Alexander Creek. We have contacted the county a couple of years ago. Again, this is another project that is not on their radar screen. We simply did, included it for consideration because again, it is like 155th Street. It is, it is a road that is used quite a bit by our, by our residents.
And as Mike had indicated, the, the, the way that they kind of glove together is the, with the past bond issue, for, for those of you who remember, the, the North Madison improvements that we're talking about here were actually contemplated on that original bond issue. But they were dropped off because the right of way costs just skyrocketed to complete that particular project. The, so we, we moved on to some other items. We do anticipate, staff anticipates that if North Madison were improved to help that north-south issue for residents who are wanting to head north, the, you would see considerable traffic increase on 155th Street. So one kind of pairs into another. You may see that anyway with the improvements that Mike was talking about that are going to be done by Belton and Grandview. And then of course, the entire interchange is slated to be redone at 155th Street, 949. So all of a sudden, that entire dynamic changes on the north side of the city as far as transportation needs are concerned.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add one more thing that unlike the 2007 bond issue with streets, most of those projects were reconstruction of existing streets. These, these streets all, for the most part, represent new construction, whether widening or improvements. And all of them would require some additional land or right of way acquisition in order to be able to facilitate the construction, not just temporary easements, but permanent, permanent right of way acquisition.
On the, the Ward Road reconstruction, has there ever been any talk with, with MODOT about the possibility of improvement of the intersection at 58 and Ward Road? To me, that's got to be critical to any improvements to Ward Road itself. You don't want to improve traffic and improve highway speeds there with the problems that we have at the intersection. We don't have, MODOT has at the intersection right now with no traffic control and, and the cars that flow through there and make that left turn, especially going eastbound onto Ward.
I think MODOT has done about all they're going to do there. I think, I think taking care of that drop off is really up the county. I mean, they, they do need to, to match that in. And certainly if we were to undertake this project, that, that entire intersection will be reconfigured.
Thank you. So we have a $36 million, $36,832 in, in items that have been discussed, talked about, considered by, by the public, by the council at different times. And depending on what year we get down to, we have to get the list down to about $10 million. The, that's why I would strongly recommend to the council that, that not get in, in any hurries to get to here, even if we're doing a 2016 issue. This is next to the strategic plan, the most important thing you all are going to be doing for a number of years. I asked Mr. Goofy because I thought it might be a question when we, when we talk about it in that global aspect, if, if he could maybe address the issue of, so we do this no tax increase bond issue and we have a lot of needs with a limited amount of money, when could we engage in this discussion again? Have you had the chance to maybe?
You can imagine in the office, I've got all these massive spreadsheets and all this bond software and I don't have any of that. But basically with, with the $9,750, what that is in essence doing is utilizing your no tax increase bond capacity for probably about 10 years. So unless you had hyper growth and assessed valuation, that you wouldn't have another opportunity for a no tax increase issue until probably 2026, 2027. So anything over and above the roughly $10 million, then you would be in a situation where the 71 cents would, would need to be increased in order to cover the additional projects.
Would it, would it be a, maybe a prudent schedule to try to select items that would increase our assessed valuation so we would have more ability to later on do more projects? If we could bring something, if we could pick the things that look like that they would increase the city's assessed valuation and spur economic development, then we would have more ability to do more later? Would that be correct?
I mean, the greater the assessed valuation, the greater the capacity is going to be.
Thanks, Pete. For Sunset and Old Mill where there's a possibility of housing added to it, could we use CID's or TDD's to help pay for that?
I am not sure, for Stonegate, there, there's a CID in place already, but for a completely different purpose. I am not sure. We could, but remember a CID or, or a NID, you are putting an assessment. Those, the people who are there are going to have to vote on it. They would have to see the wisdom of it. We can't impose a special assessment on them without the vote.
That couldn't be just for that section of the road? It has to be the whole subdivision?
If, if we. If we, and Todd, you might have to help me on this, just projecting forward, if we put a section of road in, and let's say we did a TDD, without, we would have nothing there to, because it's our road and we don't pay taxes ourselves, there wouldn't be any way to garner revenue from a house that's not there at the time. In other words, if you were thinking that, let's say we were going to extend Sunset and we were going to get 18 homes out of that, and we were going to create a CID in that area, and each home would have a special assessment on their property value, but there would be no homes there to help pay for it at the time?
Eventually it would, though.
Yes.
Just like Dean and...
But knowing that you were going to be, it could have a detrimental effect on builders wanting to buy the land to put a home in there because they'd be beginning behind the eight ball of having a special assessment on the home. And the reason that I asked Todd to do that particular exercise is obviously, you don't get another chance like this for a decade, so the importance of what you're going to be deciding on this becomes magnified to an even greater detail. Staff would propose the baby step of, in two weeks at your May 18 meeting, having an agenda item on to strictly determine whether or not you want to go forward in 2016. First of all, do you want to go forward with the consideration? Obviously, at any point in time, you can pull the plug on that, but do you want to go forward with a series of steps in anticipation of a no-tax increase bond issue and whether or not you would want to go for 16 or 17 after having the chance to mold all of these numbers over in the detail that we've given you tonight? If you do decide that you want to proceed, the proceeding process doesn't change that much. I would propose that at the second work session of each month, there be an automatic agenda item. It seemed to work very, very well for the Civic Center workshops, to have a designated period at each of those for the council to discuss the different projects that they're seeing, add projects, take away projects, mold the projects that you're seeing into something that you all would like to see going forward. And obviously, if you have any questions prior to that, it gives you the opportunity to ask staff so we can have answers for you moving forward in those. Does that schedule sound acceptable to the council? With the ultimate goal being to make the final determination just prior to... I don't know. Just prior to the new budget year, because there are elements that we would need to make a determination on for the budget going into next year. Election expenses, if it was going to be 2016, the need to have perhaps a consultant on to help us with a bond campaign. Just a reminder to the council, we cannot have a yes-vote campaign, has to be strictly informational. Staff would be looking to council as to whether or not they wanted to bring an outside source on like that. I'll be quite candid with you. I feel like we have the, and will certainly have, the horsepower present within staff to do an informational campaign that would be very, very good, but there may be some costs associated with that. There are materials involved, there are mailings involved, but we have very good staff on hand right now, and it's going to do nothing but get better for that sort of thing. But there will be the need then, if it's 2016, to meet with some community, to see if the community would like to mount a, have a vote yes committee associated with it, that sort of thing. The need for the 2016, 2017, and thumbs up, thumbs down, however, the reason I asked for that on May 18 to accelerate this in just two weeks is the defeesence associated with that. We'd need to begin planning that immediately for the summer. Any questions relative to any of that? These are the legacy decisions, are they not?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Some scheduling items for the council to consider and give me some input on. The beginning of this, your second biggest thing this year is at hand. We will be meeting in June to go over, at the first meeting in June, to go over the citizen survey, and we're going to have here for that meeting, Mr. John Albanyan. He is a consultant who will, who we are going to utilize out of professional services funds this year to kick off the council's strategic planning process. And he will be hearing the results of the citizen survey and then doing an initial exercise with you that night to start the council's road towards the actual strategic planning process. As I said to a couple of the council members individually, the citizen survey in the past, we've delivered it to the council, patted ourselves on the back for what was good, kind of wrung our hands on what was bad, and then put it on the shelf, and it appeared in the budget once a year. We need to use the citizen survey better, and talking with John, he agreed that what we need to do is start looking at the themes that we get from the citizen survey, whether good or bad. What does it mean that we have a 98% approval rating for our police force? What will that mean down the road for our strategic plan? So he'll have a short exercise with the council that night, then he will be meeting with the council in work session format of an evening to conduct a lengthier exercise to start to get into concrete format, the themes that the council would like to see discussed in the actual strategic planning process. And then, of course, that will involve a considerable amount of citizen engagement, will be a lengthier process taking us more than likely through the winter to get to a final project of a really solid strategic plan. The need arises to come up with that second meeting date for Mr. Albanyan to meet with you all, to go through this one evening exercise. To that end, does anybody know if they have a conflict on either of the July work sessions? It would be July 6 or July 20. And he is available on either of those dates. Is everybody available, or do you think right now he'd be available on the 6? I will schedule him for that date. I feel it's very, very important that the entire, obviously, it's the kickoff of the strategic plan, to have the whole council here would be really, really important. Terrific, thank you. The second meeting of May is traditionally canceled by the city council. I would ask this evening if you all, for Memorial Day, intend to cancel that meeting outright. Very good. Last but not least, Meredith and I will be out from noon, well, Meredith will be out a little bit earlier. I'll be gone from noon on Wednesday until about noon to 2 on Friday, when we'll be at the Missouri City Managers Conference this week. Anything of an abrupt nature, the city clerk has a letter on file naming Chief Zimmerman, since both of us will be gone, as the acting city manager for that two-day period in accordance with city charter. And we're obviously at Camden on the lake, so we're available by phone if you have any questions with either of us during that time. We can shoot them right back here, not in excess of 75 miles an hour. That's all I have, sir.
The work session, thanks for showing up.